Now that all the council members are present, I call to order the October 19th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment, Successor Agency, and Finance Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather. The council met in closed session this evening, and there is one item to report out. The city council met in closed session to confer with legal counsel concerning the I Street Bridge Replacement Project. Though approved by both cities and the California Department of Transportation, the project is still in the engineering design phase. No offers to purchase property for this project have been authorized by this council, and any information indicating otherwise is premature. The council understands the sensitivities surrounding this project, and in hearing the concerns of the neighborhood residents, has directed staff to analyze and develop an alternative to the currently planned Second Street access design that reduces and/or avoids impacts to the neighborhood, including the Sanchez property. City staff will present their alternative design and analysis at a community meeting held in the West Sacramento City Hall Galleria downstairs, November 14th, and will return to city council at a regular meeting on November 16th for city council direction on the design before moving forward with the project. All right? Next, we would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by Selena Alvarez by Empower Yolo. Selena here? There she is. Please come on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As noted in our agenda, we are prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under Item 1, but it provides an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item, please fill out a request to speak card and return it to the clerk. In front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard. We ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also, in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart, which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We accept the request to speak cards up to the conclusion of the reading of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report has been read and the council questions and public testimony have begun, we do not accept any further speaking requests on that particular agenda item. If you're addressing a specific agenda item, please turn in your cards as soon as possible, but definitely before the conclusion of the staff report for that particular agenda item. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause, or boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we maintain civil discourse, here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct posted by the request to speak cards and on the podium, and not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or otherwise disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Next is our public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Timothy Allen.
Hello, Mayor and the City of West Sacramento. So, the reason why I'm here is because there's no housing. I'm here pretty much every council meeting because there's no housing. You know, what really bothers me is the city of West Sacramento spent $700 million on a path. This money was given to the city by the federal government, my tax dollars, their tax dollars. Yet you're using it for a single path. That's what really frustrates me, when there are other things that it could be used for, like apartment buildings, studio apartments, that could be built on city land, city-owned land that you guys are looking to sell, I see, because I read through the agenda. So that really bothers me. Another thing that really bothers me is how this fellow's home is being threatened of being destroyed. You know, that really bothers me. Like, if it was my home, I would be up in arms about it. I'm very glad that you guys decided to hopefully change your minds on that. You know, 120, 30-year-old home, that should be preserved. So that's what really bothers me. You know, when I got kicked out of, and pretty much homeless, I was forced to leave my home city, Tarantula, Cordova, for a studio apartment. That's like 350 square feet. Not really much, but you've got to start somewhere, right? And it broke my heart that I had to do that, that I had to leave my home city, because my city council members failed me. You know, "We vote for you. You serve us, serve me, serve people like me." Not too long ago, you guys were congratulating the Little Leagues. What happens when they turn 18? Time flies. When they turn 18, they got to look for a house, and they got to look for an apartment, because Los Rios is right here. We could literally turn this city into Davis if we really wanted to, if we really fought for it. When those Little League kids turn 18 and they look for an apartment, you think they're going to want to live in West Sacramento? No, because there's no housing. Another thing that you guys could also do with the $700 million is maybe in District 1, put more sidewalks. There's no sidewalks in District 1, but there are sidewalks in Southport and all the other southern districts. The district I've lived in, I've lived in the trailer park, you know, because that's the only way we can afford housing. We don't even have houses. That's another thing that really frustrates me. We don't have a Nugget, we don't have a Target, we don't have any of these things, but I guess we have a Savmart, right? And I had to leave my home city that I've grown up in for years. Thank you.
Mike Sanchez.
Thank you for hearing me and my family as we push through this issue. Thank you for hearing us, and thank you for giving our history a chance to continue. I look forward to seeing what future plans come and what directions we can go for this project. We do support the I Street Bridge project. We drive across it, and we, I'm sure you guys have driven across, you know the issues that come along with it. I do want to say that as we reach, in reaching out to the community in this with our issue, we have heard a significant, a common theme, and that theme is, we can't let our goals of growing the city erase the history or the communities and the people that built That's, we hear that across the board, even in new homes. I'm surrounded by nothing but new homes, and I can't tell you how refreshing it is to hear that, when people talk about our historic communities and they want to join it, and they want to participate and celebrate in it. So, I do want to thank you for hearing our story and looking for other options, and any time and effort you've placed into this. I yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Matt Delgado.
Friend of the Sanchez and Duran families here again, speaking once again. Thank you for hearing us about the Sanchez home and doing what's in your power to make sure that they are able to continue living there. I'd like to also thank you all for attending, or for many of you, for attending Rock the Block in Bright and Broderick a couple weeks ago, and would just like to review a couple choice quotes from some of the speakers that kicked off the event each day. One was that the point of Rock the Block and events like that is that people want to keep families here, and they want to keep families together. Nothing demonstrates that more than the Sanchez and Duran families, living in West Sac for over 80 years, continuing to live there in the same house for over 80 years, and wanting to continue to live there for the next 80 years as well. One other quote that I thought was important was that Rock the Block is about bringing together so many different parts of the community. This includes families that have been established for many, many years, as well as families from low-income situations, families that are starting out on their own, looking for affordable housing. And it's important that everybody has a place to live in West Sac. So, thank you for hearing our pleas on behalf of the Sanchez and Duran family, but please continue to look at ways of bringing more affordable housing to West Sacramento and making sure that all the development that's going to be continuing into the future goes to making West Sac not just a beautiful and desirable place to live, but also an affordable place to live. Thank you.
Sylvester Gilmet.
My name is Sylvester Gilmet, and, you know, I came here with three or four pages of conversation I was going to make to you folks in regards to my disappointment, my frustration on behalf of the Marquez-Duran Sanchez family. And, you know, myself being a born and raised here in West Sacramento, and now after a number of years of being in Sacramento, I moved back to West Sacramento, I was really looking forward to, you know, seeing what this, just coming back and giving back to my community, and I see and I feel better, but I'm still concerned, and so I'd just like to share a few of my concerns. First of all, I wanted you folks to take a look again, like I pointed out last two weeks ago. Most of these people over here, born and raised here, majority of them are still living here, and they choose West Sacramento because they love this town, just like I do. What I would like to say is that, you know, the 213 Third Street, I just want you to remember these numbers when they do the design. 80 feet by 160 feet. Again, 80 feet by 160 feet. That's what you folks were willing to, or the city, I shouldn't say you folks, because it's not a personal thing against you folks, but the city was willing to demolish 80 feet by 160 feet for an access road. I just don't get it. There's seven other properties, including B Street and Second Street, find another 80 feet by 160 feet. You know, this is my third time speaking in front of the council, and on behalf of the Marquez-Duran Sanchez family, and I just, you know, I just want to say that I'm glad that you folks are going to take a look at finding other options and alternatives, but, you know, this family is ready to get on with their lives. This has been really, really, you know, disheartening, that it's taken three public comments from myself, from the family, six weeks, and there was no, not until tonight, there was no communication between the family and the city. Because when I think of this town, of being family-oriented, you know, and the way I grew up, you know, families, we sit down, we come together, we communicate, we talk with one another, and we discuss. So I appreciate you folks, you know, hearing the family out for the rest of the evening, and I hope you guys do the next right thing. And you know what that needs to be. Thank you.
Danny Delgado.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Duran Sanchez family as well, Mayor Guerrero, distinguished council members. First, thank you for the announcement you made this at the beginning of the meeting that, I think, gives a lot of hope to a family that's been, you know, working really hard not to be distraught over what they thought was potentially coming. So, regarding the potential raising of this house, 213 Third Street, I hope that you each will strongly advocate for an alternative to the current plan. That means to speak up loudly on behalf of an alternative plan. To remove this historical building and to take it away from a family that's been a mainstay of West Sacramento and Broderick for generations is, in my opinion, inconscionable when there are other alternatives. In a time such as this, where family and tradition is secondary to other considerations and interests, you as a council have the opportunity to show other communities around this region that you still believe that here in West Sacramento, family, history, and tradition still mean something. Thank you very much. I yield the rest of my time.
Annette Sanchez.
I wanted to show you a painting of our 213 Third Street property. Years ago, a local artist admired the house and presented my parents with a gift of this painting, so it's now a family heirloom. I just want to say, in recent weeks, we have walked the streets of our neighborhood to raise awareness of our challenge. We have received lots of community support and are very grateful. Thank you for listening to us and pursuing another option for people and families in future situations like ours. Just community outreach meetings do not meet the standards for proper notice that a home is going to be demolished. I hope that we can develop new procedures in the future.
Guy Stevenson.
I'm here for one good reason, to address all you people. The problem is that you have in West Sac, is you've got about as many police officers here, over here, as you did in the 80s and 90s. The city is expanding, you've got all these wonderful projects, but you've got to have the police to protect these people's property? Because there's a lot of property that are shutting down. I've talked to those people, I've talked to many of people, they don't want to do business over here because of all the property crime. And the reason I don't think you people care is because it's not in your front door. But these other people like Rite Aid, Walgreens, they get theft all day long. So I'm pushing this agenda, and I'm going to keep pushing it. The next time I come here, I might have 500 people in front of this place protesting that the city needs to do something. And Halloween's coming up. You've got all this fentanyl, and believe it, when I tell you this, there's a lot of fentanyl in West Sacramento, right down there at Mercy Housing. That's a drug-infested place that you people put money in, and you people need to do something about it, like hire more police, or give them a sentence to stay in the community in the city of West Sacramento. Seriously, you guys need to step it up. This is, this is not the 80s, this is not the 70s, this is not the 90s. You've got about as many cops on the street on the weekend that you do during the week, like three or four cops, and if there's a problem, somebody needs to call, it takes two hours for them to show up. Really? Do you see this shirt I wear? This is from a cop that got ambushed over there in West Sac, I mean, in Sacramento. Her name was Terrell Sullivan, and I put it on my shirt, and I wear it, plus I have her challenge coin in my pocket. Why? Because I do care about the police. All Marines care about the police. Remember that. The only thing I'm going to tell you is, I want you people to think about getting West Sac. I don't mean saturate the city with police, but keep up with the time and keep these police officers here so they don't lateral and go to another city, because if you're not paying them what they want, they're going to go, and then you've got to train more. Then you've got rookies on the street. I don't want to see any ambushes over here, and you know, right across the bridge over here, they had a shooting a couple weeks ago, right downtown. I don't want that to happen, I don't want it to come over to this side, but that's what's going to happen. All these people from the Bay Area, all over, are coming through this town, and you know what they're doing? They're property crimeing, big time. What are you people doing about it? Nothing. Zero. And I feel sorry for that chief, because he's got to deal with all this chaos. Thank you.
Susan Lemus.
First of all, I want to thank you for listening to us and coming up with alternatives for our family. It means a lot. So, I was going to say a lot more, because I was angry at you guys for a while, but now I feel a little better. So I'm just going to say a few other things. The last time I stood before you, I shared the 2005 Sacramento Bee article that featured my parents and my family home. Today, I'm going to go back a little further, and I want to share with you this document. This document is the Agreement for Sale of Real Estate, signed by my grandparents, Santos and Manuela Marquez, on July 21st, 1943. This is when the legacy of our family home began. My grandparents purchased the property for $1,700. They placed $800 down, which we figure must have been money that they saved during the Depression. As immigrants, this was a huge investment and a testament to their determination to set roots in this community. So I just want to end it with thanking you again. We hope that this legacy can live on, and that this beautiful document here will continue to just bless us. Thank you.
Adolfo Lemus.
I belong to her. I was prepared to read the letter I sent to the mayor and the council members, but in light of your opening statement about where we stand with this issue, I'm not going to do that. I was going to do it for the benefit of the public record, and for the benefit of those in attendance here, because I kind of got on you a little bit. Talked about what you wanted to have as your legacy, legacy that protected history and protected the citizens, which, by the way, as I looked at your strategic plan on your website, which is up there, unless I missed something, because I have, I'm visually impaired a little bit, I didn't see anything having to do with protecting the history of West Sacramento and its residents. And if it's not there, perhaps you might want to consider that for your revision of the strategic plan. But I just want to finish off by saying that I was brought into this family, I was joined in this family when I married Susan 40 years ago. So I've been part of this family, or half of their existence in that property. And it's a very, it's an honorable family, very rich in history, and I just wish that you, and hope that you do them right, as well as the community as a whole, and protect the heritage and the culture that is there before your eyes. Thank you.
Maria Graalba.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm so grateful for this opportunity to speak. I really think three minutes is the perfect ideal time to speak, because it's impossible to say so much in two minutes, and that's what we get in the county. I am so grateful to live here and to have you as our mayor, because your announcement today just told us everything about our mayor and your priorities, and of course, our council members. I'm assuming you allow them to vote, right? In the prior administration, this subject would not have been important. In the, with the prior administration, you know, "Oh, well, too bad, you're losing your house." Historic preservation? Oh, no, that doesn't work well with gentrification. So when I drive down Sacramento Avenue and I'm taking that curve, you know that gasoline station that's there? That's about the only thing that I have, that I see that's been there for hundreds of years. I go, "Oh, this must be old Sacramento, that little 10-foot by 10-foot, you know, in that gasoline station." And so, anyway, so I cannot thank you enough, and I cannot thank you enough, and I can, I can sympathize with the sentimental value and the emotions that, and frustrations that everybody would have, including my friend Timothy, because all of us have five basic needs according to Maslow, and that's food, shelter, and safety, and two other things. And so, when we have too many stressors and all, some of those things are being affected, you can't expect people not to be quiet. So hopefully, I know that we have an election coming up, and I know that right now you don't have a lot of cheerleaders on your side. And I always think of elections as the conservative value against the progressive value. And so, so I'm really hoping that this time around, you get to have support. And the last thing I needed to share is that one of the candidates, she used to be the president of the River City Democratic Club, she actually suspended me because I spoke here and not in her favor. So anyway, I ended up filing with the Department of Fair Housing and Fair Employment, the Civil Rights Division of the state, and they've accepted my case. So she is not going to do well. So anyway, I wanted to share that and to let you know that next Sunday, well, the 30th, we're going to be having a great big event at Bright Park, and we want to invite everyone. So, on the 30th on Sunday, from 12 to 4 p.m. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak.
We have no additional speakers. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, under Presentations, under the City Manager's Office, we have several proclamations, and our first is consideration of a proclamation recognizing our Senator, Dr. Richard Pan, for his service to the citizens of West Sacramento. And I'll just...
I can introduce the item, Madam Mayor, if you'd prefer.
Yes, you may.
But I will, I have the pleasure tonight of introducing proclamations for two gentlemen who need very little introduction, the first of which, before you, is recognizing our representative in the State Senate, Dr. Richard Pan. He's represented the city since 2014 after serving two terms in the State Assembly, a recognized leader in many fields, primarily among them, public health, and his support for local governments in his district has been unwavering, especially here in West Sacramento. Just to provide two recent examples, in last year's state budget, he partnered with Assembly Member McCarty to secure 1.5 million in funding for the Bright Park Master Plan, and this year authored Senate Bill 901, which is vital to advancing the city's flood protection project. That's surely an inadequately brief summary of his many accomplishments, but purpose tonight is to let the city council recognize him at the end of his term. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Pan and back to the city council.
Thank you, Doug. Dr. Pan, would you like to say a few words, and we'd also like to share a few words?
Well, first of all, I just want to say, it's truly been an honor and privilege to represent West Sacramento. represent West Sacramento in the California State Senate. This is an amazing city with amazing people. I think I just witnessed again the, how the city comes together. Yes, there are going to be differences and, and we have, we have that tug and pull, that of democracy of people, and you know, we're trying to balance different things. But I always witnessed that this city, you know, figures it out, listens to people, tries to figure it out. And again, I want to thank each and every one of you, have an opportunity to work with each and every one of you during my time in the state senate over the eight years. And so I really appreciate what you're, what you're doing and also pleased to try to do whatever I can in the state, well, as in the state senate, to continue to help support this city and the people of this city. So thank you so very much for this recognition. It's certainly very special to me. I'm sorry whoever succeeds me doesn't get to represent West Sacramento. I guess I think, I think Senator Dodd is the one who ends up picking you up and certainly I'm going to be sure that if you ever need any help with Senator Dodd, he'll be an outstanding representative. But if you ever need someone to talk to him, I'm always happy to also bug him on your behalf. So, because I'm going to be sure you're well represented in the state legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pan. Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you, Dr. Pan. And so I am too reaching the end of my term and leaving in December. And I got to say, for the years we've served together, you have always been a great partner to us here in West Sacramento. And the countless projects you have backed on our behalf at the state legislature and the state senate have been, Doug listed a few of them, but you've always been there for us when we've had opportunity, the opportunity to come to you, ask for help, guidance, or support. You've always been there for us. You've been here for the events. You've been here for everything. So just want to say thank you. It's been a wonderful time partnering with you and just thanks for all your support.
Thank you.
Mayor Potemarosa.
Yes, thank you. And I'll be brief because I don't have much voice. With that, Dr. Pan, wow. I didn't even notice that you were sitting right over there until just a moment ago. It is such an honor to have you back in our chambers. I remember it's been probably five, six years where you were sitting up at the dais and we had a pretty tumultuous meeting, but it, your representation said so much, having the opportunity to watch you lead, watch you receive feedback with grace and patience. There's a quote that I love and it's, "If you want something done, ask somebody busy." You're the epitome of what that means, how prolific, how committed, and your optimism all put together in this tremendous wave of getting things done for our community or state. You will be sorely missed and, but I just think you should be rest assured knowing that you've left an indelible mark on not only our community of West Sacramento, but statewide. Thank you so much, sir, for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember McCall.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pan. I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of all the constituents. Eight years in the senate, you've brought some wonderful bills forward. I remember the farm worker bill. We needed one more vote and we got it from you. That was able to rectify many years of, you know, abuse to our farm workers. So we thank you for that. And I just want to say that it's not your, just your constituents who have benefited from you being in the senate. I think all Californians have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
Councilmember Early.
Hello, Dr. Pan. So I haven't had long to work with you as a city council member, but we first met, I don't know if you remember, but we first met actually in an airport when I was working for the Mental Health Commission, going down to Southern California, I think to a hearing on disparities in mental health. And you were going to speak and I remember bumping into you thinking, oh my gosh, this is Dr. Pan, Senator Dr. Pan, right? He represents me in West Sacramento. And, and you taking the time and we, we ended up sharing an Uber together and we geeked out over mental health policy and how do we better serve our community? And for me, I had voted for you for years and to then be able to truly connect on the importance of community, the importance of public health and mental health for our children and our youth, I, for me, it left a mark as a, as a resident and a voter. And then I, I've had the opportunity to work with you in multiple facets, but since also being on city council. And I cannot tell you how proud I have been for you to be my representative, your commitment and dedication to public health. When everything was happening with the pandemic, you led on vaccines and that is just so, so important for so many reasons. We are going to miss you. I'm going to miss voting for you. I am lucky to be able to work with you in other capacities and I cannot thank you enough for your commitment to our community.
Thank you, Dante. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Pan, I just got to say, Labor fought for the right champion to represent our community and for that, that partnership that we have had with you has been immense. And we greatly appreciate all you've done in support, you know, looking at flood protection, making sure when we get the funding, working with congress members, Garamendi and Matsui are champions who helped get the resources. And I know you were pulling a lot of strings behind the scenes and being subcommittee chair, you know, making sure that funding came out in the right direction and spending countless hours in budget hearings patiently listening to everyone who came to testify to address their concerns. And you have been so creative in just spending a lot of time, remember in child support, taking a look at ways to make sure that the counties receive the funding, the adequate funding and fighting for that. I just, you know, there's just a long list. I remember the day after Los Angeles County opened up their doors for the COVID vaccine, you were there, you know, as our Zoom meeting and you're saying, what's happening in West Sacramento? I want to find out. And yes, I, you know, alerted our police department saying, we've got to make sure this doesn't happen in Dr. Pan's district. We don't want that to happen. We're going to make sure everyone that wants a vaccine gets one. And they did, and there was nothing that happened out here. We just had all the right resources, your leadership, your passion to serve our community to get us through this. And we greatly appreciate that. We have gone through some, you know, unimaginable, you know, times, you know, through COVID-19 and your, your, you know, and dealing with vaccines today, you know, making sure that everyone stays healthy. And we are so grateful for your passion, for your leadership, and for your support for West Sacramento so that we can receive our 1-point-something billion dollars moving forward to continue to maintain our levies, you know, so we are protected from floods. As we know, a lot, lot still happening in the future over that. And we continue to look forward to working with you. You know, as you're still in the community, serving families and children, you never gave that up. And so that's something I'm so, you know, just, you inspire me to continue to, as a social worker, just continue to serve our community, work in the trenches, as well as being a decision maker in, in public policy in the legislature. So thank you so much and I would like to invite everybody down for a photo, if it's okay with you.
Of course. Thank you. All right, everyone, right here on three, double, one, two, three. Lighter on three, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, next we have our next item on the agenda, which is consideration of a proclamation recognizing Jeff Savage for his years in management of the Sacramento River Cats.
So I'm back with another brief introduction of Mr. Savage. As you all are surely aware, the Savage family purchased a minor league baseball franchise in 1998 with a vision of moving them to, from Vancouver to West Sacramento. That vision was fulfilled due to a strong partnership that financed and constructed Rayleigh Field in the city's Bridge District, the home of the Sacramento River Cats. Rayleigh Field has served as a catalyst of the city's Bridge District, helping us realize our vision of a vibrant and active riverfront. I'm sure everyone in attendance tonight has enjoyed a game, a concert, or another event at the ballpark I certainly have enjoyed more than I can count. Mr. Savage has worn many hats over the years, including most recently as chief executive officer. He and his family have been indispensable partners to the city for many years, working with our council and our staff on a myriad of issues. With the recent sale of the River Cats to a new ownership group, Mr. Savage has announced his intent to step away from the team. Before he does so, the city would be remiss if we did not recognize and acknowledge all he has contributed to West Sacramento. With that, I will again invite Mr. Savage to the lectern and turn it over to the city council.
Thank you, Doug.
Well, you know, I'm very appreciative of the recognition. That's all very nice comments. Thank you. Yeah, it's been, it's been a long ride and I've really enjoyed working with, with everyone in the city and I feel like I've, I've dealt with many of you, almost all of you up here at one point or another. And, you know, I must say that while I don't live in West Sacramento, it definitely felt like a home and a community that I was definitely a part of. And so I will miss that for sure, not being here every single day. I need to find a new dry cleaners now. But, but, you know, this is a wonderful community and I'm, I'm really proud that I could be a part of it and my family had such a, an integral role in, in helping, helping West Sacramento kind of achieve where it is right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. And we're going to go down again. Councilmember Ledesma, just to share a few more remarks.
Yeah, I could go on forever because Jeff, you, it's been a pleasure getting to know you personally over the years and you've always been a friend of West Sacramento, whether it was business the city had to work with, you were always, always open to our calls, always open to where we needed something or needed your help. And, and I hope that was reciprocated back. I think your relationship with staff shows that we had a tremendous amount of respect for you, your family, or your investment here, your, your time here, and more, most importantly, about your legacy is the commitment to our community. You were always, always committed to the community in West Sacramento. You've, the countless events have been one thing and then honoring our community by inviting us, finding use of your facility when it was necessary for, for community events. I'm thinking of the event I organized in 2014, I want to say, which was we did the ride to the route when we were trying to promote the streetcar at the time. And you opened your doors as a first stop and used the Legacy Club as a place where we first gathered and got to learn about the project. You're enthusiastic about it, but that's about your leadership as well in our community, especially among the Bridge District owners. And you're always a calm voice about where you wanted to go and we'll miss that voice here. But personally, I'm really happy for you, your family, that you were able to step away from the busy life of minor league baseball ownership and management. Don't look so, you have that look like it's time, right? But, but we'll miss you here and you've been a friendly face, but wish you well as you step away from the game. So thank you, Jeff. It's really thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think Chris was looking at my little notes sheet because he said everything that I wanted to say. Frankly, what I think he said was spot on when you talk about somebody who has really made a tremendous investment in the complexion, but also the community, the people. I, I also, and my colleague has been around a lot longer and had had a lot more experiences to say, but I'm always hearing about something happening in the Legacy Club that's benefiting a local nonprofit, a local organization. And even if it's the West SAC Little League, you know, you're always available to take a call, say, okay, there's, we have some kids that just won the Tournament of Champions and they would love to take them to a game. A lot of kids can't afford to go with their parents. You know, bring them along. There's a lot to be said about businesses that really do put their heart out there and mean it, right? Not just say it. You are going to be missed along with a few of the greats, eh? This year, you know, we just, we talk about businesses like the Club Pheasant that are, you know, retiring and do a great, better place. We talk about Dr. Pan, you know, leaving a legacy behind. But sir, as you stand here today, I want you to be proud. As you stand here today, it looks like we're at the River City Finance Authority, frankly, but, but yeah, it's going to be, you're going to be terribly missed, you and your family. And thank you so much for impacting the complexion of our city. It wouldn't, never have been the same without you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage, for bringing River Cats. My husband always felt like he was back home whenever the El Paso Chihuahuas would come and play. So it was, it was very important, you know, to have that connection for him. But having been on the school board, I can tell you, that field got used for a lot of things as well. You know, we had all our graduations and that wouldn't have been possible without that partnership. So much success, I'm sure, always in the future for you and your family.
So I have not had a long opportunity to work with you, being on council, but I have very fond memories from when I moved here 16 years ago as a graduate student and I didn't have two quarters to rub together. And I remember taking my son at the time, he was around seven years old, to games out in the field because you could always count on being able to at least be able to afford to throw a blanket out and just catch a ballgame, have your kids run around. And for me, one of the things that River Cats and that stadium represents is community, is home, is this sense of belonging, where we all come together. Since I've been on city council, one of the things I've, I've learned and recognized is this idea of economic development and what that stadium has meant for our city and being an anchor to attract other thriving businesses and to show that this is an area, West Sacramento is a community that you can and should invest in and that other businesses can be successful here because we will support you, because we want you here as a community. And I can't thank you enough for leaving this mark and this long legacy of not only community memories for folks like me, but also for helping to build this new community that we see here. So thank you so much for that investment.
Well, before the barn was the River Cats. And you, your father, with his vision, established a beautiful place for families to enjoy and recreate along the riverfront. We're so grateful that you continued your father's legacy in partnership and teamwork with your mom, with us, West Sacramento. We're so grateful that you've stuck by everything through thick and thin, even through COVID, you know, continuing to chat on what we can do, to try to maintain some level of business going on and then opening up the parking lot for food deliveries and then continuing on with some food deliveries, but also COVID vaccines and so much more so that we can continue as a city to thrive and to recover. It's so much more that you've done, Jeff, as far as what you've done for our community, from allowing our kids from summer nightlights to go and attend their last night out and watching a ballgame. Everybody would go, there would have to be shuttles out, going out to the ballgame. But allowing everybody, no matter who they were, to be able to enjoy a place and watch the River Cats play and spending time as a partner. You've been immense as part of that. And we're going to miss you, you know, being able to, because you've got that hometown connection with all of us. So yeah, we're going to miss you. Just want to say that. And I'm really, I'm grateful that we have an opportunity to, you know, express this and to have an opportunity to just, you know, we're going to say goodbye, but you're going to be around. So we'll see you around is what, is what I'm going to leave it at.
Well, thank you. Yeah. I appreciate all the comments.
Thank you. So we, if you don't mind, we're going to go down and take a photo? Is that okay?
Perfect.
Right here on three. We go, one, two, three. Great. Three River Cat. One, two, three.
Yes.
Good. Always the best.
Next, under Presentations, a proclamation is recognizing October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And this is in collaboration with our West Sacramento Police Department. So Chief Strange, how would you like to proceed?
Well, I am not going to say much other than to comment on the wonderful ongoing relationship we have with Empower YOLO. And with that, bring Selena Alvarez up back to the podium. So she can make a couple of comments about the significance of this month and this recognition, but also so we can share part of our partnership through video.
Thank you, Chief Strange.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Selena. I'm honored to be here today. And I do want to thank you for acknowledging such an important issue that affects West Sacramentoans and, you know, all of California and the country and the world. So October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And it's really important to let folks know that there are services and support available to those who are impacted by this. We want to thank the West Sacramento Police Department for their partnership. You'll learn a little bit more about this in the cool video that they produced. So we're really excited about that. And then we also want to let all the survivors out there know that Empower YOLO is here for you. And all of our services are free, safe, and confidential. And also, you know, very importantly, you're not alone in this. And then lastly, we also want to let folks know if you're interested in getting involved in supporting survivors, there's many ways you can do that. Tomorrow is our Purple Day. Today, we had an event where Mayor was one of our celebrity bartenders today. So we have a calendar of events where you can learn more about domestic violence and learn ways of supporting Empower YOLO and supporting survivors in your community and in your family. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to proceed with the video?
Yes. We've been partnering with the West Sacramento Police Department for over 20 years with domestic violence advocate embedded in the police departments.
The homeless operations that we do in the city with the Community Outreach and Support Division, we have to go to every encampment in the city. There may be some domestic violence issues that arise that are a little bit out of our scope. It's great to have a partner that we can work with, and that's Empower YOLO. We make the call, do the transition, and we really don't work with the case again, at least concerned to the domestic violence though.
We currently provide restraining order assistance at this location. Survivors can come in and meet with a confidential advocate and get connected to services including safety planning, therapy, housing, legal advocacy, and counseling services.
As a legal advocate here in our office in West Sacramento, we do a court restraining order clinic and we help them prepare legal documents. We take the forms to the courthouse and we help them file. We connect our clients with services such as like sheriff to get them properly served. And then we do court prep and accompaniment.
One thing that's really important to know is even though West Sacramento provises office space, survivors should know that services are confidential and don't require anyone to cooperate with law enforcement because both agencies want to put survivors first. And receive support in a safe, confidential space is really important.
Empower YOLO is an invaluable resource for connecting domestic violence victims with services, both to navigate the legal process and with therapy to support ongoing recovery. If you or someone you know are a victim of domestic violence, please reach out. There's help available right here in our own backyard. Everyone knows something.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I'll read the proclamation really quick just so that we get a chance to read it out. So the proclamation of the City Council of the City of West Sacramento proclaiming October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas in 2021, there were 164,608 domestic violence-related calls for assistance in California. Whereas domestic violence is the third-leading cause of homelessness among families in the United States. Whereas although progress has been made toward preventing and ending domestic violence and providing support to survivors and their families, important work remains to be done. Whereas domestic violence programs provide essential lifesaving services for survivors, their children, and communities. And whereas there is a need to provide education, awareness, and understanding of domestic violence and its causes. And whereas one in four women and one in seven men have been victims of severe physical violence, beating, burning, strangling, by an intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas domestic violence affects people of all genders, sexual orientations, ages, racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups in the United States. Whereas the marginalization of certain groups in society, including undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and people living with disabilities increase their vulnerability to domestic violence. Whereas children exposed to domestic violence can experience long-term consequences, including difficulty at school, substance abuse, behavioral problems in adolescence, and serious adult health problems. Whereas recognizing the need to understand the complexity of violence perpetuated within communities and against communities and the fear of many survivors to report domestic violence to law enforcement is imperative. And whereas locally, Empower YOLO has a mission to promote safe, healthy, and resilient communities by providing 24-hour crisis intervention, emergency shelter, confidential counseling, training, legal assistance, and other services for individuals and families affected by domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, human trafficking, and child abuse. Whereas Empower YOLO also provides transitional housing in West Sacramento and throughout the county to help qualified individuals with short-term assistance to escape violence in their lives. Now therefore be proclaimed by the City Council in the City of West Sacramento does hereby recognize the month of October 2022 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So thank you so much for accepting this today.
Okay. All right. It'll be my camera, but we have helpers. On three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Again. Sideways for Taylor. One, two, three. Good.
Now that the council members have all gotten their steps in, we will go to our consent agenda items number five through 19. Are there any requests to remove any items?
Yes. Can we remove both?
Okay. No other requests. Okay. I would also like to remove number nine. And on number nine, I have just a quick question. Let's see. I'd like to ask. Thank you so much. Stephanie Chen?
Yes.
Hi, Stephanie. She, your senior transportation planner for our Community Development Department. One of the questions I have is the process for community input. I'd just like to make sure that there is, you know, just to find out a little bit, or will you be, is that still a work in progress?
So that's a work in progress, but there is a defined public outreach effort in the scope of work if you look at the contract attached to the staff report.
Okay.
We are doing, we, it can be flexible, but we do anticipate community outreach meetings and online engagement survey, pop-up workshops, and so forth. But we'll make it flexible depending on the outreach that we initially conduct.
Okay, very good. I just, ordinarily, certain parts of the community don't receive information or interest to participate via social media. So if there's going to be a...
Yes. Yeah. So we'll make sure to look into door hangers. And we do have translation services included. The contractor does have Russian and Spanish translation professional services within the planning, technical side of it too. And then there are services within our city that can assist with it.
Okay. And then congregations. You have your businesses and then you have all, just like the churches along Sacramento Avenue. If there's a way to engage them, I can help you out with that as well.
Oh, yeah. Great. Wonderful.
Okay, good. Slava community is pretty big along Sacramento Avenue.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Great. I'm also here for number 12, if you want to.
Oh, sure. Yes. Councilmember Early, go ahead.
So on this one, I just, I wanted to make sure I thank the staff, including you. This particular one is near and dear to my heart because it came out of a request that I made very early on, actually, that I was on City Council, which I was commuting back and forth to Broadrick and Southport, as I normally do, for my child. And I remember thinking about summer and access to the rec center. And thinking to myself, what would I do? And I remember going back as a young, young parent, not having, again, two quarters to rub together. And the idea of having my child trying to get to the rec center without me as I'm trying to work multiple jobs. And I went to the staff and said, it's got to be something we could do. Could we potentially give free VIA rides? Like, is that a thing? And our city staff were amazing. They really were. Because you took that seedling of an idea and said like, yeah, we could probably make this work. And innovated around ensuring that children and youth from Broadrick and Bright could have free VIA rides during the summertime, right? May to August. And then I saw this. And I remember talking to our city staff saying like, wait a minute, is this part of...? And I said, yeah. Based on that idea of being able to provide access to our city, we have some funding left over. And we want to ensure that folks that are in the north that, again, may not have access to the full scope of our city, can now have free VIA rides everywhere. And for me, that was just one really exciting. And it just shows the innovation of the work that we can do here. And also the willingness of our team and our staff to come together and make it work. And so I'm pulling it just to say thank you. Thank you to you. Thank you to the rest of our staff for taking that little idea and figuring out how to ensure that our community has access to our entire city and all the services. So thank you.
Thank you.
So, I... Thank you. I just wanted to say, this is one of the projects that I was really happy with because when I first got on the council, that was one of my concerns. How were our kids going to get to the pool on the other side? Because we don't have one on the north. And I remember, we sort of had a discussion about this, Councilmember Ledesma. You know, we knew there were buses out there. But a lot of parents don't want their kids going on buses. You know, they have a real problem with their kids having to maybe miss buses. Schedules are not always, you know, perfect. So this is really important for the people in the Broadrick and Bright area. And so I was really happy when the staff came up with this, with the VIA program. And it really made access so much easier. Also, I wanted to mention, I was, I'm on the, I got appointed by the mayor to the Yolo Salona Air Colony Management District. And these were some of the discussions we'd been having early on. You know, they wanted to make certain that those monies, you know, were afforded to West Sacramento because they knew the great need we had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And those are all excellent comments. Thank you so much. Very happy with that program as well. Oh, Councilmember Ledesma, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. I was just going to make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to pull number 13. I thought number 12 was 13. So I do have a question for number 13. Well, Raul, you thought you were going to get away with not saying anything. Mr. Werthack, can you please come up? And just receive an acknowledgement of your hard work for this very important project, the Gateway Place Phase Two project, which is very important to our city. As you heard earlier, affordable housing is very challenging. And can you just quickly provide a little bit of background, how this came about?
Certainly. So this is a project that staff and the developer, Jamboree Housing Corporation, has been working out for probably a little bit over four years now. Since the completion of the Phase One project, staff began working with Jamboree on the Phase Two project. But given the resources that were available and then other issues, we had to prolong the actual construction of the project. Fortunately, as additional funding became available, Jamboree was able to apply for significant funding from the MHP program especially. They were awarded approximately $12 million for the project from MHP. Last year, they were awarded approximately $22 million from the Housing Accelerator Program, in addition to other smaller funding sources. So it is a project that is very important for us, as you mentioned. Not only because it's increasing the supply of affordable housing in the city, but also because of its location. You know, it's in a very visible location, entrance to the city. So we worked with Jamboree Housing and their architect to make sure that the design was something that we could all be proud of. Fortunately, everything goes well. They should be breaking ground before the end of the year. And in about 18 months or so, we should have an additional 60 units of affordable housing, including six family permanent supportive housing units.
That's incredible. Thank you so much, Raul. Are there any questions or comments?
No, I appreciate you making that comment because I think it does illustrate just that story alone that you took three minutes to tell. Two minutes. First of all, good evening. Sorry about that. But these projects aren't easy. Affordable housing, I think it's important as the council goes on. And I know everyone wants more housing in general. But affordable housing particularly in these types of structures where we're getting Jamboree, a private company, coming in, looking for grants and looking for funding from different sources. It is hugely complex, extremely difficult. The technical difficulty on these types of transactions is just immense over what we can, a private developer can do for market rate apartments. And that's still hard, especially infill. So this is both infill and affordable housing. And it's a trifecta of technical difficulty. So kudos to the staff for staying on top of it. And I know people and the folks in our community, we need housing. We need all sorts of housing, affordable housing. And it's hard to set expectations about the timeline, the timeline it takes. I get the frustration. And if we're on a control, we do it tomorrow. It's just, this is not the process, the system we're in. But we are lucky to have a staff of our role and everybody else in our staff that just is so dogged in trying to get these things moving and trying to keep them going and keep them afloat. And so just thank you. I know there's more in the pipeline. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Cole?
Thank you. I have just one question. People often ask me, when you build affordable housing, we've had people on wait lists for a long time. How do people go about, or what is the process for getting on lists?
Yes. Well, generally, as the developer is getting closer to completion of the project, maybe six, three months before, they will begin to do marketing. And one of the requirements that we have included, and this was also true... that we have included, and this was also true for the Phase One project, is that they do some initial targeted marketing to get our local residents to apply, and that's typically how those initial applications go in, they will put notifications on the site itself, and we will also be doing our own marketing along with the developer to ensure that we get the word out, but we have been working with Jamboree to ensure that there's an initial marketing period where our local residents are gonna be targeted, so that we get as many as possible in those units.
So, there'd be publications in the newsletter, and would we do door hangers in any certain area?
So, we haven't done door hangers, and we haven't really discussed with Jamboree the specific marketing that will be done to do some of that targeting directly to our residents, but we will more than likely be doing notifications, like you noted, in the newspaper, on our website, there is certainly a possibility that we can do some, basically hit, hit the road and hit the ground and do some flyers, work with the churches, work with some of the other nonprofit organizations, so that they can get the word out.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, councilmember Early.
So, thank you so much for your hard work. I, I think, as we think about affordable housing and how we're able to build it here in West Sacramento, I have to ask, 'cause I think it's important, and I think I know the answer, but I, but I wanna ask if the community knows too, one of the funding streams that we use to match, to leverage, to really build affordable housing, is through our in-lu fees that typically developers pay when they are coming in and building new homes, correct?
Excellent question, yes, so, part of the gap financing that the city is providing is coming from our housing trust fund, the majority of it. We are also allocating, as noted in the staff report, $2 million from our local home program income funds, but certainly, the housing trust fund is probably one of the most important sources of local funds for these types of projects. So, when, in prior occasions, we have come to the council to request that certain developments or developers be allowed to be pay the fee, that's how the money's being used, to make sure that we have funding for these types of projects and provide this gap financing, that is, as councilmember Ledesma noted, very challenging financial structures for these affordable housing developments with, you know, four, five, six layers of funding from state, federal, local, private.
I appreciate you expanding on that, and, because for me, I think it's really important as we continue to think about, how are we going to build additional units, right? We have 60 units here, and these are very, very important. I'm also very grateful that we are building in some set-asides for family housing, not only that's affordable, but that offer wraparound services that are semi-permanent supportive housing, because we know that that's crucial as well, but I do think that as we move forward and we're thinking about some of the new developments that are coming in, I think this is going to be a key issue, because as we have new homes coming in and we have these potential for fees that we can bring together, to cobble together money for affordable, affordable rental housing, this is going to be what, what the gem is, what the, what the outcome could be as those new housing are coming in throughout our city. So, again, just wanted to thank you and reflect that, 'cause I think it's important for our community to know that.
So, thank you, Mr. Huerta, for all your hard work in making this happen, it's not easy, and, you know, to the entire team who works with you, so, thank you. Look forward to seeing this, you know, groundbreaking opportunity to get this moving along. And on our consent agenda, I mentioned 5 through 19, it's actually 5 through 18, are there any requests to speak, madam clerk?
We have no requests to speak.
All right, I'll ask for...
I'll move, I'll move the recommended action of the consent agenda.
Second. All right, councilmember Ledesma moved, councilmember Okala second, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Okala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, it is approved, next, under our public hearing agenda, item 19, by Economic Development and Housing, is a public hearing and consideration of our first reading of ordinance 22-19, regarding First Amendment to Alora at Washington Square, 440 West Development Agreement with Blackpine 440 West LLC, we have Ms. Amber.
Yes, Amber Saiset, thank you.
Saiset, okay, program manager with the Economic Development and Housing.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well, good evening, mayor, and members of council. The item before you tonight for consideration is ordinance 22-19, approving an amendment to an existing development agreement with 440 West LLC to extend the term of the existing development agreement for six months. In October of 2020, the city entered into the existing development agreement with 440 West LLC, thank you, the existing DA provided a two-year term extension to the project's vested tentative map, the intent of the two-year term was to provide time for the developer to acquire additional property west of the project location and incorporate that new property within the existing DA through a restated and amended DA. That additional property has since been acquired by the developer, and the project currently has two tentative maps now, tentative map 4936 and tentative map 5211. If you know on the slide, the area shaded in yellow is tentative map 4936, and the area shaded in blue is property under tentative map 5211. The existing DA that we have with the developer is only the area shaded in yellow, so that is what the existing DA property location is. The current DA is set to expire November 13th of this year, staff is needing additional time to complete the restated and amended DA that would incorporate the property under tentative map 5211, the area shaded in blue, into the existing DA through that restated and amended DA. So, the six-month, the amendment before you tonight will provide staff additional six months to complete the restated and amended DA, bring forward that for your consideration, and then also complete the project's final map. If the eventual restated and amended DA is approved, the project will provide multiple city benefits, including dedication of a neighborhood park, as identified within the Park's master plan, and implementation of Washington Realized Sustainable Community Strategy. Additional benefits including adding new residential development to the Washington District, serving employees of commercial uses in the district, and supporting mixed-use multimodal land uses. Additional support for economic development goals, including place-making for public art and supporting wayfinding to the city's riverfront amenities. Part of the, the park that's being dedicated, there is going to be a place dedicated for public art, the public art will be provided by the city, but the developer is making sure to reserve a portion of that park, the park improvement, to include public art there. On October 6th, the Planning Commission unanimously approved Resolution 22-2PC to recommend that the city council approve ordinance 22-19. The commission added an additional recommendation that the council provide an additional six-month term option at the city manager's discretion to the initial term. Should the council wish to add this additional six-month term option, council would need to direct staff, and we can include that additional language within the amendment. So, this concludes my presentation, staff and the developer, Mr. Perez, President of Blackpine Communities, is available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions among councilmembers? No? All right.
We'll tell after public comment.
After public comment? All right, open it up for public comment. Madam clerk, are there any requests to speak, or...
There are no requests to make public comment.
Close the public comment, bring him back to council. Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, Amber, and the update on where this project is. I was in, had to get out of work for an hour and have lunch yesterday at Treehouse, and walked around the corner and ran into a resident, I've known for years, and one of the things that he communicated to me was just how absolutely proud he was of his community and the way it's, his neighborhood. He's across the street from the Kind Project, and he's watching the development happen and the work we've done in the Washington neighborhood already, and I say that in context of this, 'cause I, it's just, there's more coming, and he's, he couldn't be happier about it, what I was doing for the neighborhood, you know, these are vacant lots for all intents and purposes that are being, that are planned to be done for some time, so, I'm really, really pleased to see this, I'm supportive of going forward, I'm hoping that developers here, that we, I'd like to see this kinda get off the ground, it's been, it's been some time, and I get the delays, but certainly, just am super supportive of seeing this neighborhood get more housing, because as we just talked, been talking about, it's the theme of the night, I guess, this housing, this more housing is good for everybody, so, I'm just super supportive. You mentioned that if we want to add another six-month extension, I'm sorry, maybe I just didn't understand, are you requesting another six months on top of this, or...
So, staff's recommendation is for a six-month term, the Planning Commission recommended that the council consider or add an additional six months on top of that at the option of the city manager, so, at the end of the initial six-month term, we could provide an additional six-month term option, that was the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. I won't be here in six months, so, I'll leave it to, I, I, I think we're, I think if you're confident, we're gonna get it, kinda get to the bottom of it, and, you know, that gives a kind of an opportunity for council, the then-council, to check in on the project in six months, I think that would be my recommendation. Anyway, so, thank you for the presentation, I'm supportive of the six-month extension.
And just to clarify that, do you mean to have the delegated authority to city manager to provide the additional six months if it's deemed needed, or are you saying just the initial six months?
Just the initial six months, and give council, you know, give council, if there's a need for another one, an opportunity for council to check in if the terms are, if anything's different. Does that make sense, city manager?
Yeah, I hear, I hear you, yeah.
We could write it as the council has an option to extend it for six months. The reason why you might wanna do that is, at the end of this six-month period, if we needed an extension, otherwise, you'd have to go back to Planning Commission and back to council again.
Oh, I see.
Right, that would be in order of preference, I think, from all, all things considered, it would be better to do it that way than to require another trip to Planning Commission.
Finally, I'm supportive of that amendment as the city attorney outline. Thank you for the, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions among the councilmembers? Nope? All right, okay, with that suggestion...
I'll consider that a motion, since we had public comment, right? So, consider that a motion to support, approve as recommended with the additional language as proposed by the city attorney.
I'll second that.
All right, madam clerk, councilmember Ledesma moved, and councilmember Early seconded, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Okala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, this item is approved. Next, under public hearing, is item 20, is a public hearing and consideration of Resolution 22-122, adding a carry concealed weapon application fee to the city book of fees, and the presentation will be given by... Your name, please, just state your name.
Good evening, mayor, and fellow councilmembers, Sergeant Sal Lombardo with the West Sacramento Police Department. Tonight, I bring to you the Resolution 22-122, which is an amendment request to the current book of fees to add a fee schedule for the concealed carry weapons process. If you're not aware, historically, the Yolo County Sheriff's Department has maintained this process for all municipalities within the county. In April of this year, the current sheriff announced that he would no longer be providing those services to municipalities and only to the unincorporated residents in Yolo County. Current law requires us to provide that service to our residents, so we quickly developed a process to provide that service to our citizens and are now requesting that we make a modification to the fees. Some of the fees are already on the book schedule, which include DOJ fees for fingerprinting and state fees. The fees that we are requesting are just to cover the processing of applications and maintaining that process in effect as we move forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions among the councilmembers? None. I'll open it up for public comment. Madam clerk, any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you, I'll bring it back to council. I just have a question, a couple of questions. Do we have a list of those, of our residents, since Yolo County had this responsibility? How is this gonna work?
I do not have a number of West Sacramento residents that they currently have or have permits. I can tell you, the county currently has approximately 500 permit holders within the entire county. The sheriff did agree to maintain current West Sacramento residents that are permit holders for future renewals, and we are only going to be absorbing new renewals from September 1st of this year and moving forward. Currently, we have, I believe, 17 applications that have been, that are in process.
And the workload for, for West SacPD, do you think it'll require an additional full-time staffer to do this, or is it part-time?
It would most likely be a part-time position, with approximately 20-plus hours or so of work weekly.
Okay, and to be able to track, making sure that the, that the concealed weapon is safely stored and, you know, managed properly, is there any workload for that as well?
Not once a permit is issued, so, currently, an applicant would apply, we would review the application, do a backgrounds check on the individual, bring him in for fingerprinting. At that time, we will interview that individual and talk about safe storage with the firearm. They are mandated by law to participate in firearms training prior to issuing the permit. The maximum allowance the state allows is 16 hours of training, which we adhere to, with a minimum of 18, maximum of 16 hours, we chose to go with 16 hours of training. We also vet each trainer or vendor that citizens are allowed to choose from, to make sure that that training remains consistent amongst all vendors. But moving forward, once again, once the permit is issued, there is no check or follow-up on that individual from the city or the police department.
So, I recall a resident being a little upset in that he didn't have privacy, because the sheriff had the access to his home to be able to check on the storage of the firearm. Does that, does that make any sense? Is that something that occurred?
No, although I am new to the process myself, I have not read anything specifically that states that I have the ability to just enter anyone's home, unannounced or announced, to check whether or not they have safe storage. Again, I do talk about that with each applicant and encourage that they maintain safe storage, but I will not be entering anyone's home to make that check.
I have a question when you're, after you're...
Sure, I just...
Do I?
Okay, started something. Okay.
It's okay, you can keep going, I just wanted to...
So, I just thought, I thought that was, I couldn't answer the question, 'cause it was a Yolo County thing, and, but, but I thought that was interesting, and, but I am interested in knowing if, you know, if you can follow up with me, because I'm expecting that once this is out there, we may be asked questions.
Yes.
'Cause of the prior procedure, 'cause this, this gentleman was very clear on, on the authority the sheriff had, and he's still probably grandfathered in under the sheriff, or you may hear of people saying, you know what, I don't like the sheriff's model, I prefer the city's, could they transfer over to ours?
They could, their one requirement is that they are residents of our city.
I see.
They do choose to do that, they would have to go through the entire application process all over again as a new applicant.
Okay.
Which means that they would have to go through training, the 16 hours of training, all over again, file a new application, they'd be treated as a new applicant, and then to maintain...
And pay the fee.
They would have to pay the fee, yes. And to maintain their permits every two years, they would have to, they have to retrain four hours, the state only allows a maximum of four hours for retraining or for renewals.
Okay. If, if we're adopting the same policy that Yolo County has, and, and Yolo County's policy is that you, you can enter, or at least, that's what it sounds like, our mayor's experience has been with, with one of these residents, then, then doesn't that mean that we've adopted their policy and that that would be the case?
I guess the question is, are we adopting their policy?
I think that's, I thought that's what, what he said, was that we were gonna do exactly what Yolo County did.
No, we have our own policy, every county, city, law enforcement agency has their own set of policies. I was part of the, the creation of that policy, and nowhere in our policy does it allow us to go into anyone's home.
Do you know how it actually differs? So when when creating our own policy, because I I always if if Yolo County has been doing this for however long, right, forever, it seems like. Is there a reason why we would adopt our own policy rather than adopting the policy that the sheriff has has had for as long as right time? Or did we at least compare our policy to theirs to say like, hmm, you know, we we appreciate that, but we're not going to do it?
I don't know their policy per se or how it compares to ours, but I have used them as a reference in developing the process. But that really was mainly towards the application process, the systems in place that we need to process those applications. But as far as policy, I we as an agency, I think any agency would be smart to maybe look into other policies. But you ultimately want a policy that's going to work best and suit your citizens.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, if I could chime in here, I would discourage assuming that the the anecdote that was brought up is the actual policy with the county. We don't know that for sure, so.
Correct.
Could we at least get that information? I mean, is that something someone can check on?
I can certainly follow up and get you an answer. I I with my 20 years in law enforcement, I've never heard of such a thing or seen anything like that written down anywhere. It's related to.
I'll add, I doubt that is a legal policy and I think that's what the county is doing.
So it's not factual. Got it. Okay.
But that said, we can I can work with the chief and Sergeant Lombardo to if they can do a quick comparison and we can.
I would love that. I just want to know what the differences are.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Sergeant, I have a question, actually, too.
Yes.
Members of the public who tend and how old do you have to be to apply for one of these? Is it 18 or 21?
So you are required to be 21 years of age to possess, own, purchase a handgun or any concealable weapon in the state of California.
Okay, thank you. And the other question is, what will the fee be?
Unfortunately, I don't have the actual fee schedule in front of me, but the the state does not.
It's right here, right? It 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 they gave it to us.
Okay. The state does say that we are not allowed to create or excuse me, gain revenue from this process. It only covers the records person, the work that I do, the the work that the chief might be involved in in regards to that process. So and then they cap it at certain dollar amounts as well.
Okay, so it comes.
I believe it's $147 for a standard new permit issue. So there's two additional permits, one for a judicial individual. So and then a second one, which is a reserve permit, which goes to correctional officers.
Yes, I saw the correctional officers one at 275.
Yes.
So I wasn't sure what the, you know.
The judicial permit, which is good for three years instead of two, I believe that fee is approximately 157. She magically brought it to me.
Yeah, so this includes, there's the city fee and then there's, of course, added the DOJ live scan fee and the state fees that are set by other agencies and passed through. So for the city's portion, the initial fee for a standard two year is $189, or the judicial three year is $189 and reserve four year is $189. It's the same because it's a cost of processing the application, which is the same for two, three, or four year permit.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I still have a question.
Council member Early.
So you said that you're so there's two questions, actually. So so the first one is you you mentioned that it you're anticipating that it's probably going to be roughly 20 hours of work a week for a part time administrative staff. Could you maybe and I and I ask this only because it sounds like we don't have the the numbers of the current West Sacramento residents that have this this license? And so I'm I'm wondering how you anticipated what the average workload would be without knowing what the the load is on average for West Sacramento?
It's it's a pretty rough guess based on the work that I'm inputting now, just processing the current applicants. Again, I believe it's 16 or 17 that we currently have. I will spend any time from an hour to two hours sometimes daily processing those applications and going through them. Conducting correspondence with the applicants, making sure that they're providing the documents that they're required to do, speaking with training vendors and corresponding with them to make sure they provide me their licensing, their certificates from the Department of Justice. So I mean, it's 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 constant. Work, I guess, just to just going through each application and daily to make sure that things are on schedule. The state also requires that we process applications within 90 days of receiving them. So there is that time factor in play there.
So 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 far since, did you say July is when we?
We went live with it September 1st.
September 1st?
Yes.
So since September 1st, you've had roughly 17 applicants. I'm ballparking it, but it might be exactly.
Yes.
And it's it's taking you on average 20 hours a week is is what you're anticipating. If we continue at this pace, and we have no idea, because it sounds like the sheriff's not sharing the data with us. So we have no idea to know if if there's like a a high season or if this is something we can anticipate moving forward. And so we're just it it sounds like we're just having to guess, unfortunately, based on what we've gotten since September.
Correct. It is the best educated guess I can provide you. I know currently the sheriff's department devotes an entire 10 hour day to just processing applications once a week.
Okay, for the entire county, though?
Yes.
Okay, and we have no idea what percentage West Sacramento represents?
I do not.
Got it. And that's not your fault, but.
Yeah, we do have the ability to adjust fees as needed. So if there is a that's probably what Robert is up there to say.
Well, you hear me digging in. I'm like, we have no data?
We we had to do some estimates at the time pulling this together about how much it would cost. And so these are, in some cases, sort of estimates and guesses. And we looked at the time that a records clerk would spend doing this, the time that a sergeant would spend on these applications and the chief. And so it's not based on a 20 hour work week. I think what was said earlier is if we used a part time person, they would typically work about 20 hours a week. But in this case, I think we're assuming about an hour per application between those three positions. And so that's how we cost the amount of the permit. We are doing an an overall book of the update and we update them annually. And as you've seen recently, I mean, we bring things when when we have more information to update them as we have more information. And so as we go through this process, they're taking tracking more closely what the cost is and how much time that we're spending on these. And then we can come back and update the fee at a later time. Right now, the the total fee is less than what the county charges slightly, but in the same ballpark.
Okay. Thank you very much for for that.
And?
Thank you.
Okay, so I have one more question.
Yes.
And and this is related to, you know, I know that probably people that are applying for this are responsible gun owners. But I just you want to see if there's any additional training to as as family members are in the home or in around, you know, a weapon, if there's a way to train them to engage with the relatives or friends or something to educate people not to, you know, just to talk about things in a way. Does that make sense?
Yes, of course. Again, when I interview each applicant that I interview, or I know that when the chief interviews, safety is utmost paramount that we talk about. Safety and the responsibility of being someone that, you know, chooses to carry a concealed firearm in the public. And I could tell you from my experience so far, although it's just, you know, I've only done about a handful of interviews so far with with individuals. After talking with them about the legal parameters and the safety and the responsibility that's involved, a lot of them kind of second guess on whether or not they should even pursue the application. So. I do stress the safety. It's not something that we can force or impose, but we do make sure that it's important, or I feel it's important that we stress that to them, especially when it comes to family members and children. I have three children of my own and and it's something I try to do.
Thank you. And and I say this based upon experience here in our city, seeing how access to a firearm has, you know, affected the lives of families.
Absolutely.
To suicide and just making sure.
And mayor, I mean, that is why it's so important that we have safe storage, right? And so that I know that's something that's important to to all of us and that's something that we're we're working on as a city as well to have that that may potentially that kind of ordinance like our fellow cities in Yolo County have.
And I can tell you, we even go so far as vetting the vendors, the trainers that the applicants have to use to make sure that that topic is spent in exhaustion in in their training. I believe once entire day, they're training the 16 hour training is a two day course. One day is strictly classroom, talking about the laws, safe storage and those types of things, so.
Thank you. That's so important.
Of course.
Thank you, Sergeant Lombardo, for all your work on this and appreciate your work out in the community. I know we've on my ride along, you were, you know, taking the lead on what was going on that night. So, you know, the the watch, you know, sergeant. So thank you so much for your work out in the community as well. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, mayor, council.
All right, with that, I'll accept a motion.
Madam mayor, did we do the public hearing?
So moved. Sorry. Oh, I think we did. Didn't I open up a public hearing?
I think you asked if there are any comment cards, but I'm not sure we actually opened.
Oh, but then we have to open up the public hearing, madam clerk.
There are no requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and then we'll close the public hearing?
Right, typically, we open the public hearing and just ask, even though there's not a comment card, because it's a public hearing, if somebody wants to speak.
I see. So we'll, yes, open it up for a public hearing and nobody is interested in speaking at this time. So we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a vote at this time. Okay, so moved. Madam clerk, council member Alcala moved and council member Ledesma seconded.
Council member Early?
Aye.
Council member Alcala?
Aye.
Council member Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, this item is approved. And we will go now to our, we have no regular agenda items. We'll go next to our general administration function. Part two is our council communications from our assignments.
I don't have any.
Council member Early?
Uh, council member Alcala, go first. Thirty seconds. On October 12th, Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District met. And I'll just go right to it, our regular agenda. There was a pub two public hearings, one on air toxic hotspots, 2022 annual report. And the second was a public hearing on permit fees on agricultural burning. And the board passed both fees. And that's all.
And. Council member Early?
Yeah. This past Monday, we had the opportunity for our housing authority to actually interview for an executive director. The interview went very well. We, I don't think have offered the job, but I would say that that we are hopefully moving forward.
Next, we have council appointments. We have an appointment to the Yolo Habitat Conservancy Implementation Advisory Commission. And that is Mr. Ari Newman to our Yolo Habitat Conservancy Implementation Advisory Commission. He's been on, oh, here's his application. I think we do have a copy of all of that in your packet. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to review, but he's been serving and we would like to just reappoint him.
Mayor, on that one, there was actually a consent item that made that appointment.
Approved that already under item 10?
Let me find that item.
Was it on the consent?
That was item 10. So that one, that one's been done. It's a little different because the appointment's actually made by the commission. I believe you're just confirming it. So that that action has been done.
Okay, we also have another item where we need to appoint council member Early as the primary and council member Alcala as the alternate under the Yolo Housing Commission, because that is set to expire the the end of this month. Is everyone in agreement with that?
Move the recommended action.
Brooks for me, second. And madam clerk, I think council member Ledesma moved and council member Early seconded.
Council member Early?
Aye.
Council member Alcala?
Aye.
Council member Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And next is our council calendar.
Good evening.
Sorry, did you have something, council member Alcala?
No, I'll just wait till.
Just one item to report on tonight. The PD has been having a series of three community listening sessions to get feedback from the community about police department and police services. And the third one is next is on Wednesday, November 9th, from 6:00 to 7:30. And that's going to be at the community center. And it'll be facilitated in English with with Russian translation as well. That's it.
City manager, we sorry, council member Alcala, would you like to say something?
Yes, I just wanted to mention something. It was already mentioned, we are having another Dia de los Muertos event on October 30th from 12 to 4. It's going to be really great. We have our West Sacramento Police Department also participating. We will have Aztec dancers, piñatas. Supervisor Gary Sandy is co-host co-hosting this, I guess, co-hosting with me. And we hope that everyone shows up. It's going to be a lot of fun. Last year was a tremendous success. And we will be publishing in the newsletter as well as the, what is it, West Sac Discussion Board and some of the other boards that are out there. So the community knows about this. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. City manager report?
Yes, thank you. Just a few quick items. So the West Gate We Place item obviously was approved tonight. Big big deal. We don't build affordable housing projects every year, so but I did want to note, just for the council's future reference, in case you wonder, we are planning a groundbreaking for that. The date is still, we're working on confirming that with everyone involved, but it sounds like it's going to be in early September, like that first week. So stay tuned for that.
Early what?
September?
I'm sorry, December, December. I'm trying to, yeah, never mind. Iron Man is happening this weekend. I only mention that because it's a major event in our city. It almost happened last year, except we had a huge rainstorm, but you'll see a lot of activity. This one's a big one and I want to just give a shout out to all the departments that have been involved in it, which is many departments, but but primarily parks and in processing the permit, the police department having to do all the coordination and traffic control. PoliWorks O and M is is literally going to be filling potholes on the on the route, I believe, any right up to the the end. Our communication staff are helping get the word out. But I just want to make you aware of that. There will be some road closures and and a lot of activity. You'll start seeing athletes doing whatever they do to get ready for it, maybe swimming in the river. And then finally, I wanted to just let you know that I I've told the council, we have a program that we've been doing called Assistant City Managers and Residents, where we rotate in department heads. We have a a number, I would actually include them all in this category, of great potential future city managers if they want to do it. And so we're looking to give them some exposure to that and in the process, give the city manager's office a little bit of help. So for the past 10 weeks, Ariana Adame has been our our first participant in that program, has done a great job with it. I want to thank her really for for her work in that. But I want to let you know that the next person in that role will be Roberta. So for the next 10 weeks, she'll be stepping in, helping out in the city manager's office. And then we'll be rotating a new department head in every 10 weeks. So I know I've talked to you individually about it, but now that we were through the first installment, I can tell you, at least from my perspective, it's been a great success. Hopefully, Ariana would do would say the same thing, but you can all talk to her offline about that. So that's all I have tonight. Thanks.
All right, thank you. City attorney report. All right. Future agenda item request we have on our agenda, recognizing past mayor Cabaldin.
Thank you. I I did submit through our process and I got concurrence from you, mayor. Thank you. Putting asking the council to consider putting on a future agenda item, a recognition for former mayor and current port commissioner, but that that term ends, I think, at the end of the year. So again, just finding that opportunity officially, we we were stuck in COVID and the transition happened. We didn't have a chance to really honor the mayor for his two plus decades of service. So want to ask the council to please consider that for on the put on the agenda in November. I think we're thinking of Aaron was targeting. So, yeah, that's the ask.
All right, we'll need to take a vote on that.
Normally with these, I just look for consensus among the council, so doesn't need to be a formal vote. If there's, you know, if there's discussions, fine to have it now, but we would we would bring back an item. We look at the November calendar and have a proposal for what form of recognition that would include. The idea is a a street renaming, so we would we'd bring back those details probably at the first meeting in November. We'll have to look at the schedule, though.
Okay, no vote. All right, that is, I'll accept a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I mean, we can we can take a vote. I think unless there's opposition, we can we can move forward, though, so.
Just last time I thought we needed a vote. I was I glossed over that and I was stopped in my tracks to take a vote.
I think we just. Let's go ahead and do a vote. Let's do a vote, just to remove any ambiguity about that. And we've been we've been kind of back and forth in the past, so.
Fine. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Council member Early moved, council member Ledesma seconded. Madam clerk? Council member Early moved, council member Ledesma seconded. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Early?
Aye.
Council member Alcala?
Aye.
Council member Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.
Seconded.
Madam clerk?
Council member Early?
Aye.
Council member Alcala?
Aye.
Council member Ledesma?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
I was thinking about you with that, Roberta. You did, you looked like you wanted to stick around for a while.
I feel like I look really scared.